Good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock. The regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission. Thanks to the Simsbury Library for letting us use the space and SCTV for filming. We've got a focus. I don't need to see both of them.
And Kevin.
Oh, okay. Will be seated?
Because I live on Newberry, I think I'm going to recline.
Okay.
Because we have a Florida deal on this.
Good. Okay. The first item is discussion of the status of Meadowwood for which I am recused. So, we'd like to have someone share. I'll take over in a second. All right?
Yeah.
I'm leaving the room. Was it that or before? Anyone else who needs to recuse themselves? Gary, you said you're going to recuse yourself, but you're not.
Yeah, I'm just not on the mem-- I'm not in the board.
So you're not voting?
Not voting.
Or discussing.
Or discussing anyone.
Okay, so if we have a member recused themselves, do we need to appoint another alternate? As long as you've got a full member, you've got six, so that's all you've got.
So you were.
One, two, three, four. Four out of six, right? Okay. The first item on the agenda is the discussion of the-- on the status of Meadowwood. Hiram, do you have some statements?
Just in general, a few weeks ago, the developer at Meadowwood started to do the soil remediation on the property. A number of the neighbors called with concerns with regard to the status of the project. So, we asked them to come to this meeting to just to sort of update the commission in terms of where they are in that process. Talk a little bit about what has gone on before, what's going on now, what's supposed to go on in the future. And then just to bring the neighbors up to date. I assume that kind of people here may have questions for the commission or questions for the applicant to try to get those on the table for tonight. There's nothing to vote on necessarily, but it's just to kind of update the status of that project and then see where we go from there. So, Scott here?
Yep.
Scott, come on in.
I'd just like to have whoever comes to the podium state your name and who you may represent, and if you're a resident, state your address as well.
Scott Bosco from Griffin Land. I'm here giving up the Meadowwood project. As of today, we are gate moving all material from the site. Tomorrow, we're going to start bringing in topsoil to restore the site to its original condition. All the material containing residual pesticides in excess of the RSRs, as stipulated in the state settlement agreement, will be moved. We're going to bring in the topsoil and stuff. We will continue with the road sweeping and traffic control throughout the process. The topsoil takes about two to three weeks, depending on whether we bring all in. Probably toward the end of April, May, we'll start putting out the landscaping and planting that are required for the army corps. So, I'm hoping to be done with the entire project at the latest by the end of May. But all the topsoil coming in will be done before the end of May.
Any commissioners have any questions?
Scott.
Yes. Hiram, I don't know much of Hiram, but Howard has been at our beach, has been receiving copies of all the weekly reports stating how much material was left. All the soil monitoring employees, so he's getting copies of all the... Once we remove the two feet of soil or thereabouts, we're testing the soil below, and if we're near an edge, we're testing the bankments. Howard's getting a copy of all those to show that the results are coming back below the RSRs. He's also getting daily reports of all the air monitoring. So far, every air monitoring report is going back and on the track.
The commission does have no... The latest report that I do have, Scott, is the March 19th one, and that indicates the non-material remove and some of the information.
Any members of the town, residents, have any questions for Mr. Bosco?
It's one of the things, I mean, question for him.
Is it identified?
Alan Richard through Newberry Court. It's on the second housing from Stryton Lane.
Street.
The street. One of the things, I guess, was somewhat disappointing in the sense that the first we knew, because I thought when the final project got approved, went through the Supreme Court and everything else, I thought there was going to be some method of communicating with the residents that work was going to restart or something was going to happen, rather than 5:45 one morning, hear all the dump trucks coming in. That was the first notice that we had as neighbors and close by residents that anything was even going to kick off and start up. Okay? So, the second thing was, in terms of some of the things that happened in terms of the traffic control, took almost 10 days, I'd say a week or 10 days. Because one day, when I came out, there was a dump truck coming out, and I was coming out from Three Newberry Court to go to Simsbury. They come out towards about 10:00. There's probably about 100 feet, 150 feet at best. So, he pulled out, I pulled out about the same time, thinking both of us were not going to pull out, and we almost met in the middle. Okay? Then, the cleanup didn't happen until about the seven or 10 days. So, when I took my youngest to Simsbury High School, there was a big rock that I had to go around. And then, probably a few days later, on the same day, my son came back with the car from Simsbury High School, hit a rock, busted up a tire. So, brand new, bought in November, snow tire. So, I'm still waiting for how I can make a claim against the town or against Griffin for that. But in terms of, then in terms of kind of, you said, "the project," I guess, and the remediation will be done when you bring in the topsoil. Is there kind of a timetable that we, as kind of close by neighbors that are going to get affected by the noise and the disruption and everything else, know as to how things are going to progress and what kind of timetable things are going to be progressing? So, we at least know we can plan our days or we at least know what's happening. So, some level of communication about this is kind of the project plan, if you say "project."
Well, unfortunately, some of my neighbors not here, the neighbors, they called me and spoke to me. They said that it is very dangerous actually for the site to be where is the entry, is it because they almost had... Oh, sorry. Wendy, Richard, Three Newberry Court. I think, I don't know when it happened, but they had an accident on Sunday. So, and I said, "Oh." And she said, "Yeah, because there's a blind drive." And Howard's email response to me is, "If you were to drive from Laurel Lane, there's two bend. And before you go to Newberry Court or where the exit and entry point is, there is actually an incline. So, it's the worst place to be, have to have a location." And can I read what Howard... Is Howard here?
No.
Okay. And I brought the email. I was like, "I can't believe this." Before work on the site began, I arranged with the site contractor that no truck traffic into or out of the site could occur during school drop-off and pickup times at Squadron Lane School. Trucks loading beginning at 7:00 AM and must leave the site before 8:00 AM. Returning trucks cannot return to reload until and after 8:45. Truck traffic out of the site ends by 2:15, allowing the street to be completely clean before afternoon school pickup begins. I know that initially trucks would line up on Hoskins Road as early as 6:00 AM, but they are not allowed at the site now until 7:00 o'clock when loading can begin. Now, there was a line of trucks before 6:00 AM lining up for it to get into the site, and that was at the initial start. Okay? And a lot of times, we were wakened up by 4:00, 5:45 AM by these trucks going in. And then, to add to the point, I will skip a number of things which I have questions and I disagree. He says, "The current entrance to the site was chosen for several reasons, and I want the commission to hear this. First, there's an existing road there that has served the farm and Aquarius Water Tower access for many years. Second, it is the most direct access to the area where the soils have to be removed. And third, as the amount of mud or dust tracked onto roads is in direct correlation to the distance the trucks have to travel through the mud or dirt to access the road, the shortest distance is almost always the best. Site lines there are not perfect, but with a flagger on site, that issue has been addressed." I'm trying to understand the rationale, especially to the third point. When he says the dirt, amount of dirt and dust tracked on the roads is in correlation to the distance where they have traveled from the access road to the road, it's not true. Because the road, the dirt is tracked from where they are coming out all the way to right before Squadron Line Road. And it's not that I'm monitoring, my job is not monitoring, but I have direct access from my window where I perform my daily routine. And any given time, four trucks load up, okay, come on the street, my, where my street is, and three, four trucks, empty trucks, came to the site. And this is ongoing, non-stop. And this has lessened a little bit after I addressed those concerns to the board on March 10. Then, Howard says the street is being continually swept to keep mud and dust to a minimum. That's after my concerns has been addressed. Yesterday, the sweeper spent five hours sweeping the street. That being said, it's impossible to move 25,000 cubic yards of the material off any site without tracking some dirt onto the road. My point is, I'm not expecting no dirt on the road. I know that they try to keep to the minimum, but that was not the case for the first 10 days until I dress on March 10. And after this incident's happened, he has three, two occasions, and my son has one occasion. So, I don't understand the whole rationale about it, and to say that this is the closest, shortest distance, almost always the best, to me is, you're asking us to be risk tolerant in this situation and to let our safety be compromised? And there's a blind drive where our street is. So, my thing is, a year ago, so there is already an access road where you guys have performed something right there, and I think it's the third barn between my street. You're aware of that?
To the east of the barn.
So, right now, as I see it from my window, the excavation is going towards the barn. So, what... I'm trying to understand this. Why can't the truck, why can't you create an access where it's already existing between Newberry Court and Squadron Lane and just create... And you guys have all the machinery, the resources. Is it too much to ask you guys to move over there when your remediation works is moving towards that direction? And the dirt and mud that you track, it's going to be lesser if you come up from the other access? I mean, try to help me to understand.
Okay. In response to the gentleman's first question, I believe there was a posting in the paper saying that work was going to start on such and such a day. So, there was public news.
Found website?
It's on the website also. As far as the trucks coming before 7:00, we did have an issue. We had to use subcontractor trucking to a company that can handle the material and take it to Massachusetts, where it's being disposed of in a landfill. So, they were subcontractors. They were not technically our own people. We did have an issue with them showing up early because they wanted to be the first ones there and be the first ones out. We rectified that within a few days because they had no idea we were there at 6:30, 6:00, and we stopped that very quickly.
No.
5:45.
5:45.
5:45.
I'm going to tell you that, it's 5:45.
We had...
And it's not the first few days, it's the seven to 10 days before I came to the Board of Selectment meeting and addressed that, and that stopped.
I knew there was an issue.
Scott, I'll tell you this, okay?
That's fine. I'm not... That's fine. As far as the sweeping of the road, we were sweeping the road starting on day one. We kept it, we were cleaning the road. With the amount of material coming out, we had to increase the sweeping, so there was a sweeper parked here pretty much continuously for the last two weeks.
I don't know about the first day, but...
The first day, I'm saying, there was a sweeper there. He showed up midday. He was not sweeping continuously, but by the second week, he was there continuously, and we've been sweeping every day. Mike Gerard and Jim Martucci from Simscroft, they're there providing the work. We did see there was an issue. We did provide the flagman just before you called, so we know there was a call, and we had already gotten, made our phone calls to accommodate that. Now, as far as the access and getting the material off the site, the reason we used the road we've been using are multiple. One is the shortest distance. There was already an anti-tracking pad in place because we had used that road previously a few years ago when we did the remediation to the north and east of the three barns. We moved all that material there. Also, we couldn't go anywhere to the east toward those barns or toward Squadron Lane School because we would have to cross the wetlands that we were working in.
What's an anti-tracking pad?
It's, you put stone down, the state...
So, it's like the 100 feet of...
Correct. Stone, firestone.
How down is the substrate?
Correct.
How deep is the substrate?
Typically 12 inches.
Okay. So, to actually duplicate that for the other entrance would have taken some work, but...
Well, no, we already have it on the other entrance. But what I'm saying is, we couldn't take the material to the east toward the barns and Squadron Lane was because we would have to cross the wetlands that we were working in.
What lands are we talking about?
That's what all this work is. We were pulling out topsoil from the wetland area. So, if you look in the back, they were pushing material toward the front, putting out the trucks and taking it out. We couldn't go through the wetlands, across the fields to Squadron Lane. We couldn't be working with any area that where, we couldn't put a new road in the area that where...
So, is the wetlands the back area?
No.
The wetlands of...
The wetlands of the front.
Okay. So, you're saying there's no way to transverse from that one corner across to come out to where the barn is?
There's always a way to traverse, but do I want to put in a half a mile of road through the fields, through the barns to come out in front of, to the west or east of Newberry Court?
Because again, I guess my, I mean, it's a little bit of a kind of terminology, I guess. If it was a road there, it was more like a cow path in my mind, other than the fact that it did have the substrate. Because I, over the, I mean, we've been here probably, I don't know, 14 years, and the amount of trucks or anybody that I've ever seen go in there, unless, you know, unless they always do it when I'm not around, the amount of traffic that went on that road was so minimal and every... I mean, it was reasonably overgrown and everything else. I rode my bicycle down there, so to call that a road, it was a...
It was a farm road.
Yeah. I mean, it was a beaten-down path, maybe with a good substrate for about 100 feet, 12 inches down. But, but again, I don't want to steal her, but anyways. Because again, I will say that, to me, you know, and again, you've invested so much, but I would say that going forward, if there's a substantial amount of need for construction equipment to enter that, I would certainly ask somebody to rethink it because where that other road is, it's midway between the stop sign and where the aperture ends and you're back on level ground. It gives the most amount of space for somebody to have a clear pathway, whether you're coming or going on that road, and it would just be most accident preventive way you could put an entrance in there to do any construction work. Where you have it now, it is the worst because around that bend. If somebody was speeding around that bend, they would have absolutely no shot at stopping when that truck comes out. Because that truck lumbers out with full load. He ain't no fast thing.
Our intent is only to use that road as a project.
And your flagman is usually not on the downside, he's on the...
Upside.
He's on the Stryton Line side.
Like I said, our intent is only to use this road during remediation.
It's not the best position for the flagman, Scott, I can tell you that. It is not in the best position to be flagging traffic down. So, I mean, I don't understand the whole rationale about the wetlands and all that, but as far as I can see, where my eyes can take, as far as that, there is not so much a wetland so far. You guys, the developer, invest so much, you have the machinery, the capability. So, all I'm asking is to revisit, and if you have to go a zigzag line to get to the access road where you have right now between a year ago, I have no issue with you guys' machinery going in the middle of that property because we could see it's a straight line. It's so convenient. But this is a really sticky point for all of us at Newberry Court.
Like I said, right now, we're done taking off all the material. So, everything is off-site and disposed. So, our intent now is to bring in topsoil, so we're going to have equipment there bringing in topsoil. We have to mix organic leaf litter with the topsoil to get a certain organic content to place back in the wetlands. That whole process is going to take us about three weeks.
So, the other thing, I guess I just have a question again, maybe it's that on the website or someplace else where you can find out what's going to happen, but you had mentioned landscaping. So, one other question is, okay, so you dug out all this soil. Fortunately, we had a lot of windy weather to create a lot of dust. You're going to put topsoil down. Again, we have exposed soil. So, what's going to happen when the wind starts blowing and the dry comes in terms of dust and everything else? Are you guys going to put a ground cover over it? Could grow a ground cover?
The whole area has to be established. So, we have 11,000 trees, bushes, and shrubs to put in there in addition to a wetland landscaped mix, so a seed mix, which will all be done, I'm hoping, before the end of May. So, this is the optimum time for planting. And we're working in a wetland area, so hopefully there shouldn't be much dust to dress with.
So, essentially, everything is now focused in that one corner?
That's it.
Okay.
In the future, you're going to have more of this done?
This is it.
And that's it?
That's it.
For the remediation, for the remediation to finalize all of our site...
Now, it's incoming.
Substantially less.
Sure. Cheryl from the game at Newberry Court. When the construction starts, I assume you're going to build in there eventually, but are you going to continue to use the same access road or...
I would say probably not because we've looked at the site plans where that access road was where Houston is. So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't use that road if you're going to be traveling over Houston.
My other comment about, to add to what Wendy was saying about where that road is, is I know you've been conscientious of the opening and closing of Squadron, but most of the kids on our street go to either the middle school or the high school, and their buses there at 6:38. And at 6:38, then you know what's happening out there, and they come back at 2:30 in the afternoon. So, I think it is a significant danger to have school buses, kids crossing the street, the kids get off there, cross the road, and it's not a good situation. And I'm glad to hear it's over, but if you're going to continue to use that road...
Well, we're going to continue bringing, we have to continue bringing topsoil in.
I think you have to be concerned with more than just where the squadron traffic is going because the squadron traffic goes by, the squadron bus doesn't come until much later. But, the bus that most of the kids on Newberry Court are getting on is 6:38.
Right. Right now, what we've done is we've, since we're done removing the material, we no longer need the subcontractor trucking to get the material to Massachusetts. So, now it's going to be our own local forces, Simscroft's own gentlemen, they don't start until 7:00, 7:15, so there will not be any trucks on our roads or the roads at the site till 7:00, 7:15, hereabouts. Because you're going to be getting loaded at 7:00, so I won't be in our area till 7:30. Then, we'll take a break for the morning in Squadron Lane, take a break in the afternoon, and also the high school and middle school.
One final question. Can I ask who I can approach to file a claim for the tire?
We can talk, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Super MRC 119 East Sweetog Street. I'm not concerned about the traffic because I don't live on Newberry Court, but I'm concerned about the poisons and the contamination. I was on planning when we dealt with a very thorough look at how this whole thing was going to be remediated, and from everything I've heard, there's been a lot of issue with how it has been remediated. The trucks are supposed to be covered. All that dust that's been up in the air could have some serious contaminants in it. The whole point of having the school kids not having to deal with it is because inhaling it is bad because it's chloridine and dieldrin. And we had an environmental scientist who sat on the planning commission with us, and we went through all the specifics to make sure that this was going to be done correctly. And we were, you know, as much as you say it's all cleared out, there were all these piles that were sitting there, and there's all these pictures of them. I'm concerned about, A, people that move in with the little kids who are going to grab, you know, hands of soil and put it in their mouth. I'm concerned to make sure that this was supposed to be checked after it was all done to make sure that it's not done. I mean, it's done correctly. And with the trucks, the fact that the trucks were not covered and leaving and all this dust was going up, the whole point of it is one ounce of dust and everything was supposed to stop. And so, hold on. So, the reality of the situation is, is that now the town is liable for whatever happens because you're supposed to follow whatever goes on because once they vote and everything happens, it's yet again a situation where the town's going to end up with the liability if something happens because of this. And, you know, we're not just dealing with some simple, you know, types of poisons. This was serious, and it's serious for the kids, and it's serious Squadron Line was not supposed to have recess. You know, they were supposed to, you know, be inside during all of this. All of that was not adhered to. All the neighbors were supposed to be notified. It's crazy. I'm getting calls at my house because people, you know, knew that I was on the planning commission and I cared about the residents, and I'm like, "You need to call somebody else because I'm not on planning anymore." But this is ridiculous that this has happened. So, somebody needs to make sure that the store has been minded, and I don't know whether DEEP needs to get back involved or what, but I'm hugely disappointed by what's happened. And I said last night at the Board of Selectment meeting, and I mean this, when people come to buy those lots, there should be a big skull and crossbones on every single solitary lot to make sure that when people know that there are poisons in that ground or there were, so that they can check it out for themselves, so that when their little kid puts in a handful of soil in their mouth, that they're not going to be worried that the kid's going to die.
As far as all the trucks not being covered, state law requires all trucks be covered when they're on or carrying them. So, all the trucks were covered.
Well, there's all this dirt in the road.
Let me finish. So, the trucks were all covered when they were leaving the site. The reason there was dirt in the road is we pushed all the material from the rear of the area being remediated to the front and then load the trucks. So, the trucks were not driving onto the area being remediated, they were staying on the road and then driving down the road. Frost was coming out of the ground, creating mud, so we tried to shift the road over and get them out of the mud as quickly as possible. That is why there's mud on the road. Fussin' O'Neill was out there every single day. We had four permanent monitors, stationary monitors located upwind, downwind, and two on each side, monitoring the air, real-time monitoring throughout the day. The town was getting copies of the reports every day, as was I and the site contractor. The Fussin' O'Neill inspector also had a monitor on himself as he was walking around to make sure there was no particulates in the air. He could not encounter particulates on any single thing. During this process, we also picked this time of year because there was snow cover on the ground, so that was minimizing all the dust. And if you go back to now, it was a pond about two feet deep, full of water, so there was no dust on that site during this process.
We just talked about dust.
There was no dust.
You just said there was dust before.
As far as skull and crossbones and town being by, the town hired the one environmental engineer. He reviewed all the surveys done, all the sampling done. Fussin' O'Neill was, we reviewed all the surveys done and sampling them. Both came to conclusion, as did the DEEP, this was the only area that needed to be remediated, have material removed from the site. The rest of it is acceptable per the RSRs of the state and the DDP.
So, where is the comprehensive report for all of this? Because every time everybody asks for it, they can't get it.
For the first phase, which was done two years ago, the town received a copy of the report, the environmental engineer received a copy of the report, we have a copy of the report, has the Fussin' O'Neill. When this project is done, everybody will also get a copy of that same report.
So, there's a copy in Hiram's office that he needs to get people when they ask for it? Okay. Now that we're clear on that. Because anytime anybody calls, they don't have it.
We cannot, like I said, none of this property was able to be developed until we remediate this last section.
I totally understand that.
All the documents in town hall say no building permanent can be issued until this work is done. The town has the option to come back at any time and do additional sampling.
And test it, correct. And I would suggest that you guys...
And I've, I spoke with town staff and said, "Do you need any additional sampling?" And I have pages and odd pages of samples I can provide to anybody.
These guys should be looking at it and making sure that they might want to ask because, you know what, no offense, but I don't think staff should be the only one weighing in on it.
Right. Every week, I send the town staff a report stating what was done, what was remediated, air sampling is every day.
So, in terms of the monitoring, to follow that, after you've brought in the topsoil, after you put in the land state, is there going to be permanent monitoring in place or is at that point in time, no need, no expectation for monitoring?
There was no soil monitoring or air monitoring required. Everything is removed. The only thing we have to do is we have to provide monitoring wells, and we have it for two years, one, two years. I think it's three tests, once a year, twice a year. That's it.
Is there dust control during a construction phase?
Only during removal of material.
Not required during the construction of the facilities?
As far as the housing? Typically, the state has, the state requires what's called...
Standards.
There's state standards for our particular matter in the air, so we have to buy that.
Any other questions from...
Any other questions from the public? Everyone, you wanna add anything?
No, just some, like, say, anybody that has any questions, just give us a call. Howard's usually the one that feels the answers. Questions on this? If he's not there, I'm certainly glad to do that. Want to see any of the files, please feel free to give me a call, stop in anytime, anytime we're open, anyway. Glad to give them to you as well.
One last question, I guess. Going forward, for those of us that don't, depending on which paper it was, I don't know, because I don't have the ground, so, but is the best place to, is all the information about forthcoming construction, timeline, everything, is that something that's gonna be posted on the town's website? Do we go to your website? How do we get communicated with to understand what's gonna happen and when? What is the means of communication?
It's, it is posted on the Planning Board's website, on the town, Townesbury's website. So all the, the updates have been posted, when we started, they've been posted. The latest update was January fourteenth, I think was the latest update on that website.
So?
Oh, Jim Martucci.
January fourteenth?
January fourteenth of this year, yes.
Announcing the commencement?
Yes. Yeah, where we were, where we were at at that point, yes, commencing the work, correct.
Please understand, too, that there is a certain amount of flexibility that the owner has on the property in terms of when they develop. So we probably will not be posting a notice every time they develop a new house or new section.
No, 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 I understand that.
But just, just be, anytime anything significant happens, we'll do our absolute best to get it out. We did this time through the newspaper, we tried also very hard to get people's emails, and some were successful. We tried through the North Simsbury Coalition, for example, to try to get lists of folks that belong to the Coalition's addresses, but we thought putting it in the newspaper and putting it on the website was the best we could do. That in and of itself costs money that we didn't have, but we thought it was important that you get those messages then, so.
Okay.
But if you have any other questions, you know, please let us know.
But the website will be kept up to date?
Yeah, and also, too, and I have no idea what Griffin Land's exact plans are for the development, and they may or may not, but that's up to them, so we just don't know that, so.
Yeah, I'm well, I live on the five tether lane. Will, will the developer, will you come back after everything is completed with a status report to the Planning Board and then go forward with the applications of the development? Or is there some kind of checklist that the Planning Board has to say, okay, the soil's removed properly, check. The new landscaping has been put in, check. Now you can build your roads and then start building your homes? Is there like a timeline, or?
What we have to do is, once this remediation of this area is complete, then provide all documentation to the town saying all the remediation of this entire project is complete. We can now refile our, if I'm correct, our subdivision plans?
Actually, I think it's, I think the subdivision plan's done.
Or we have building permits.
Yeah, that's, that's right, then building finished.
So it's a real file, come back before the Planning Board?
No.
No, it's just confirmation that the remediation's been done in accordance with the agreements that were on file. Other than that, after that's done, that's been agreed upon, then-
But who signed up on that? Planning Board?
There's no requirement.
There'll be more town staff. They'll have to review all of the reports that are due at the end of the remediation, and then they can, by agreement, can move forward with their construction, as long as all those requirements have been fulfilled.
But just to put your mind at ease, we have no problem with sharing that information with the commission, just to keep everybody on the same page, and we'll put that on the website as well, just to let everybody know that it's done, and if you have any questions, give us a call.
But the commission can ask for more for testing, because that was one of the things we added into the-
Well, only as far as the agreement is concerned.
Right.
The agreement has already been set in stone here, and as long as they fulfill what's in the agreement, they have no reason and we have no jurisdiction, basically, as long as they follow the agreement that's been agreed to by town attorneys, or, you know, our staff.
But that was one of the things we put in the end?
We did, and so as long as they are following through on that, we can't, we have no other recourse against them, other than they follow their agreement.
Well, I think, I mean, my only two cents would be, the developer seems like they're attempting, once they found out there were concerns, they got a flagrant, you know, they're trying to-
They're trying to accommodate.
Be good neighbors.
Correct.
It's only in their best interest. So the more the neighbors knows, and particularly the school, or if there's gonna be a flagrant, just the more information, the better, in terms of if everybody knows about it, once they start bringing in a lot of-
Well, as Hiram said, they're wanna, they wanna work with everyone and pacify everyone's concerns, it's not like they're going to play hardball.
I mean, it's technically posting it on the website, which luckily doesn't cost any money, you know, I mean, it costs a little bit, but it's not like advertising in the newspaper or mailing everyone.
Right, it's just, we've lost our jurisdiction for the most part, once this agreement has been fulfilled. And we weren't even the ones who actually negotiated it, all we can do is agree upon it and make sure that most concerns from the public are addressed. And as long as they're being addressed, and we have town staff that is, you know, on guard to make sure that's done, and all possible goodwill has been taken care of here, we're doing the best we can. You know, and the other side of the equation is weather conditions. It's gotta be flexibility, because at this time of year, it can be extremely messy, depending on what the weather is, until the frost breaks. And as they said, this is the best time of year to do it, because we have the least amount of dry conditions, and that's where you're gonna get your dust factor. And so this was probably the best time of year they could actually accomplish this, but somebody was gonna be affected here. If they moved it down to where you suggested, down to where the barns were, you're affecting the neighbors directly across the street there. Granted, the sightlines are better, but someone is always gonna be affected in this general area.
Mostly in that.
Yeah.
That was the issue, I mean, the biggest issue was-
I understand, but it seemed like some of the concerns, and this is probably the worst possible spot that they could actually enter and exit on that curve.
I just wanna clarify that we're not here to dispute, we're here to clarify so that we all understand, and I thank the town, because I am aware of the history. You know, you guys made a concerted effort, unfortunately, it's not unanimous, this development has to move on. But what I'm, you know, well, it's already been addressed, is the safety issue, and I still cannot understand, yes, the neighbors will be affected, but we're talking about regular users, especially immediate moves, very core residents, and we have kids and school buses, and I point out to even the Howard, about the bus stop there, which Sheriff just mentioned. So all we are saying is that we don't disagree the project has to move on, whether remediation was housing, development later on, we don't dispute on that, okay? But what we are addressing is the safety, and we hope in moving forward, where the timeline is, you know, developing the housing, the property there, that you take into consideration the safety, you know, of all of us, especially with the kids at the bus stop right there in Newbury Court. I mean, it's just-
Like I said, as far as us bringing in topsoil, we will take, you know, take into account the times, the students that travel to middle school and high school, through all the Squadron, Squadron Lane School, we're gonna have the flagrants there, so we're gonna get much more time.
I, just, again, Jim, with Sims Croft, I keep in contact with Salters and Lieutenant Fred from the Police Department, just to keep them up to date when we're doing anything, just to give them an update, too, as to what's going on. So I try to have a conversation with them at least once a week, see if there's any
Well, let me also ask the question, I don't know whether it's within the jurisdiction of a Planning Commission or who else, because I did bring it up, nobody has answered my question, and that is, we would like the Public Works Department or whoever, the Highway Department, to put a sign, like a blind drive sign, so that people know that there is a Newbury Court right immediately around the second bend, because there's a lot of incoming traffic that's moving really fast.
There's gotta be signage out there that's being, are you talking, you're talking about the street now, or are-
No, no, not the trucks, I'm talking about a sign like blind drive or immediate street that drivers are aware.
You're looking for a permanence, a permanent sign?
Yeah.
Like a traffic sign saying that there's a blind drive or something, a permanent traffic sign?
Well, you can suggest that to the Highway Department, I'm sure they would be more than happy to oblige, if it's a concern, or to some of the town staff. Once again, we're only volunteers, we meet once every couple of weeks, but you'd get your better response by approaching the, some of the town staff, Hiram and/or Howard, and then they will direct you to the appropriate person.
They got a copy of my email, but they have not answered my question to that point.
Well, I'll be glad to check in to talk to the Public Works Department and the Police Department and coordinate that, so you don't need to come in by the way, but I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Tim Luskely with Griffin Land. I think Scott has been effective at communicating, or explaining to everybody what procedures have been done and how they've been adjusted to address things as they've, as they've come forward. And we appreciate that people have come forward and made their concerns. I thought it would be helpful to explain the chain of communication that is being used, because we ought to keep in mind that this is, what is going on now is the result of almost, actually more than sixteen years of a development project, in which there's been a lot of interaction between Riverbend, the Town of Simsbury, the residents of Simsbury, countless consultants related to the project. Well, what's, what's come of this, there's two main operative agreements. There's a settlement agreement that was of record many, many years ago, in terms of what the ultimate layout of the project would be and how we would go about doing that. The approvals include a comprehensive soil relocation and remediation plan that has been on record for more than four years, available to anybody, either at the town or through many consultants, but essentially, the town has had all this information on file for people to look at. Part of that plan established a chain of communication in which we would interface with town staff in order to administer this particular component of the project. And the town staff would guide us on how best to go about doing certain components where interpretation of that comprehensive plan was required. This includes communication. We notified the town that we intended to commence the project at this time after some discussion as to when, when this component would best be administered. The town notified its residents through their chosen means, which in this instance was, I believe, I'm not sure if it was a newspaper posting and a web posting, or if it was just the website, but it was on the front page of the website for a number of weeks, I think it's been moved to the Planning Board page now. And there is daily communication between the town and Griffin, and Riverbend, as well as Sims Croft Echo, which is the contractor that's performing this work, with many different staff members. So there is, this is not something that's being done without notification, without communication. That being said, there's always room for better communication. So this forum is very effective in terms of learning what the concerns are. We can certainly take a look at these situations and see what can be done to ameliorate them and perhaps come up with other alternatives, provided that they are within what is required as part of the comprehensive plan that has already been negotiated, approved by all parties, including the state and even the EPA, if I'm not mistaken, the Army Corps of Engineers, the DEP, the Conservation Commission of the Town, and many, many different consultants. So I just wanted to give everybody an understanding that this is a very complex, this is the, we are administering what is a very complex plan that has been thoroughly thought through. However, there are situations like this that need to be addressed, and we recognize that, and we, and we hope to, that we can, as I said before, ameliorate what situations come up that might not be working out favorably.
Okay. That'll conclude the conversations. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I probably invite Berg back in.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's T.J. Donahue, and I represent Tim Ellsworth and the Ellsworth family, and we're here before you informally today to discuss an important family matter for them, an important matter for the Town of Simsbury, because the end result is that we're trying to make sure that seventy-five of the most important acres in Simsbury ends up in the hands of the Simsbury Land Trust. The property is on East Sweet Talk Street, it's known as Tanger Hill. With me tonight is Tim Ellsworth here, Phil Doyle, LADA, who's done the design, we'll go through the lots with him, and Dick Davis is here, who's the acquisition manager and the past president of the Simsbury Land Trust, who's got the most skin in the game from that organization's point of view in trying to achieve what we're doing. The Ellsworth family has owned the property known as Tanger Hill for over eighty years. Until, two years ago, it had served as a family enclave with two homes and vast holdings of pastures and significant geological features. For many years, the Land Trust and the SLT member Ellsworth family had discussions about strategies to conserve and preserve the property in its natural state. To that end, in 2012, a contract was signed under which the great majority of the acreage was to be sold to the Simsbury Land Trust. That was, that contract was for, that contract was for ninety-one acres. As a part of that concept and contract, the Ellsworths also made a significant gift toward the purchase, which would be provided at the time of purchase. That contract had great support and significant commitments from many public and private partners and sponsors. However, last year, they were advised that the federal party could not contribute a significant sum as they had budgeted and planned. So we are now working on a very attractive Plan B, and that's what brings us before you tonight. The Land Trust and the Ellsworths have amended the contract and plan, and the new, the new plan and the amended contract provides that the seventy-five best acres for habitat, features, recreation, and quarter values, which are shown on the map in front of you and the map in front of me, will be, will be sold to the Land Trust. And the, there will be a carve-out of sixteen acres, which are shown on your plan, for the development of three lots in the most suitable area, having low-impact features, which will enhance surrounding properties and reduce impacts. This can be achieved by working with you and your staff to make our techniques and ideas match with the spirit and letter of town regulations. Tonight, we want you to look very closely at this, because we seek your guidance for the concept that we specifically asked you to review and preliminary ideas on the following. One, that the three-lot configuration shown on that exhibit will fulfill all subdivision and re-subdivision requirements for open space at and around the entire Ellsworth property. Two, that the access can be found in compliance with town requirements. Two, that the access can be found in compliance with town requirements. And three, that the access right-of-way can utilize a more efficient, smaller lane for access to the three new building sites on the private road, which is shown coming off of Lucy Way, or Talcumon Road, sorry. Phil Doyle of LADA is here to present the concept and to respond to any questions that you have, and we'll all be around to respond to any questions you have. Phil?
Phil Doyle from LADA. The plan in front of me, on the board, I have outlined in a green marker the seventy-five acres that is the intent to transfer to the, to the land trust. And I didn't, it's the same plan that you have in front of you. I haven't highlighted the eleven-by-seventeen, but the, to give you an idea of the mass of the property, as T.J. has just indicated, it's a total of ninety-one acres. It is mostly zoned R-eighty. There's a R-forty strip that runs along the East Wheaton Street. The, the goal of the family has been to try to take and transfer the bulk of the land to the, the land trust. When we take a look at this piece, ninety-one, ninety-one acres, about thirteen percent we'd be looking at, at breaking into three-lot development. Eighty-three percent of the land would, would end up in the, in the land trust holdings. The site itself, the ninety-two acres, is about thirty-two hundred feet deep. It runs from East Wheaton Street eastward, up over a half-mile deep as it runs to the top of the ledge at Pendleton Park. And you can see on the, on the plans in front of you and also on the larger board in front of me, on the, abutting us entirely on the north is land trust property and/or land of the state of Connecticut that is part of Penwood. To our east, the top of the hill, is Penwood. To our south, south is the bottom of the, of all of these sheets, is either an extension of Penwood and private open space. There are five, portions of five different residential properties, some of which are on Talcumon Mountain Road that are to our south. The desire that we would have on this plan, as expressed in this plan, would be the entire frontage on East Wheaton Street would go to the land trust. All of Lucy Brook that runs out of, I think is it Lake Louise up in Penwood, runs down over the cliffs and down into the pond on the site, eventually down to the Farmington River. All of that would go on, into the parcel, and that's one of the reasons why the parcel is shaped such for the land trust, and it was Tim's father's desire, that all of Lucy Brook be protected and that go to, to the, to the land trust. I have indicated on, on the sheet conceptually where all of the trails exist on the property. There are numerous, numerous trails on the property, all of which that would ultimately benefit the land trust. Tim and I were up the other day walking through the property and the snow was about a foot, foot and a half deep, and the Simsbury boys' track team came charging out of the woods. They use, they use the land up there for, for track practice, and they apologized for being there, and we said, oh gee, don't apologize, you know, we'll continue to use it. But it's a lovely piece. Hopefully, in the future, it'll get, it'll get more use. The area where we're proposing three-lot subdivision is primarily a field. It's been a field that's, Tim has in the past pastured courses. Years ago, John Ellsworth, as the Talcumon Mountain Road subdivision was being developed, acquired a fifty-foot access to the cul-de-sac at Talcumon Mountain Road. We would be using that access to create our private road. We'd create a subdivision that would meet all town subdivision standards in terms of lot size, developable areas, slope requirements, bulk coverage requirements. We would meet all LID drainage requirements. The, we would seek one waiver, and that waiver would be for pavement width. We'd be proposing a, a road, a private road, of eighteen feet as opposed to twenty-six feet, in all other regards, it would be built to, to town standards, but it would be a private road. And it's from this private road that we would develop our required frontage. Every lot's required to have two-hundred-foot frontage in an R-eighty zone, as, as you're known. The lots that we would propose are all in the five-acre range. They run between lot number two, the lot in the middle, is about four-point-seven acres, that they run from four-point-seven to five-point-three or so acres. And yes, we could have designed a private road system that was slightly longer than what we are proposing here, and we could have shown five or six lots, but that was not our intent. Our intent is, has not been to maximize the number of lots, but to present something that would be lower impact and would fit the setting more appropriately. The top of the hill at or around the zone line that is shown on, on the plan, the R-forty, R-eighty zone line, that's about three-hundred or three-hundred-and-fifty feet up the hill horizontally from East Wheaton Street. That is about the two-hundred-and-fifty contour, you know, the, above two-hundred-and-fifty is, has to be looked at for visual, visual impact. And that would all be part of the process. Initially, we have looked at that and we have determined that if we place houses on these lots, none of these houses would, would be visible from any of the surrounding streets. And so we think it's very well protected. And that's something we have, as we go through the process, we, we definitely have to demonstrate to your satisfaction. Again, the only waiver we'd be looking for is the width of the road pavement. Tim and I, the other day, met informally with, we've met not only with town staff, but we met with the fire marshal, Fire Marshal Kevin Kowalski, been a fire marshal in town for a number of years. He's reviewed a number of subdivisions that have come before you, and the, his comments to us have been that if I can demonstrate that his fire vehicles, fifty-five-foot truck, solid-body truck, can make the, the turns around the cul-de-sac, and what I've shown here is a town standard with cul-de-sac, that he would be satisfied if we have a longer driveway individually to a house. He would like some type of residential turnaround in front of that house so he knows that the truck, as he gets up there, could, could turn around. And he would probably ask that we agree to provide sprinklers for, for the homes. He's asking that, I guess, on most subdivisions that, that you see, and we've, we've agreed, we've agreed to that. There is no water and sewer this high on, on the mountain, so we would have to demonstrate septic systems. That would be the next part of the, of the process. And, and the houses would have individual wells. So all of that would be built into, to the planning. We believe that this is, would be lovely, would fit in well, would not adversely impact the surrounding properties, and would allow us to provide the balance of the property, the vast majority of the property would be able to go to the, to the land trust. So I think that concludes what I have to say.
We'd like to get any questions that you have. The yield of the property would be sixteen or seventeen lots if it was put to full development. And the, the trade-off, if, if we can all work together on this, is that there'll be three lots on about five acres each, and then the rest, seventy-five acres, will be with the land trust in perpetuity.
And if you'd like to schedule a site walk, if you'd like to come out and look at the property, we can arrange that at any point. There's, was still a little bit of snow up there a week ago, but at some point soon, that might be gone.
I'm not so sure.
Well, I'm still skiing, so I'm not sure either, but yeah.
See, I have a couple of questions. The lots that were approved on East Wheaton Street, there's still, that is still a go at some point. Should the market?
Should the market turn around, yes.
Could you point out on, on the plan where the, where the Delhorn property is in relation to, is that much further down the hill from Talcumon?
It's right, it's right.
It's in the little niche?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the three subdivided lots, they were divided off as separate parcels. This is a, this is a, this lot that we, the subdivision proposal that we proposed tonight is ninety-one acres, which is a single existing lot.
Right.
Unsubdivided. The rest was other property of the Ellsworths, but it was not part of the subdivision.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I'm familiar with the.
The neighbor, Tim's in the hall.
Straight ahead.
Okay. Straight down.
Straight, it's got the frontage on East Wheaton Street, straight up.
Okay, thank you.
The, the driveway, yeah, the long driveway, yeah, he's got.
Yeah, very.
Yes.
The fifty-foot access that you've got, I've got a picture here, I'll show you. So the fifty-foot access, did you get that from one of the property owners up there?
Years, yes, years and years ago, there was a, a land transfer with one of the property owners. Property owner that is to the south and west, abutting that fifty-foot right-of-way, was looking to build a tennis court.
There is one there, yeah.
And they, and they needed additional land, so the Ellsworths did a, a land trade with them that allowed them to, to build the, the tennis court. And in, in return, they transferred over fifty feet.
So your access is between the tennis court and the house, I see.
It's to the east of the tennis court. Yeah, the tennis court is built to meet setback regulations, so it's probably, the tennis court, I think, is thirty or forty feet off the property lot.
Are there any restrictions on the use of that right-of-way?
No, it was intended for access, should it be needed. And, and what happened, what happened here went, Tim's dad was, planned for all of this. He also acquired with that a ten-foot construction easement along, from the same people that he acquired the land and trans, that, that this land transfer for the tennis court. This ten-foot construction easement, because many times when you're building, if you were building a full, a public road, you need a fifty-foot access, you need to, you need, the requirements tell you that you have to disturb the whole thing, and you actually need to work a little bit outside that. So he could, he actually acquired additional construction room. And one of the values of, of building a private road that would, if you granted us the waiver, that would be slightly narrower, is that we could preserve more trees, do less disturbance in that, in that right-of-way area, so that when came between those two lots, we wouldn't have to have a, a massive clearing. And Kevin Kowalski, the fire marshal, had said to us that, that, that would be fine with him, just make sure that if we're keeping some of the trees, he wants the trees cleared so that the fire trucks can clear through. He wants to have at least fourteen feet or fifteen feet of, of clearance. And that, I think that would fit better with the, with the setting, because it's nicely, it's a nice area, very woodsy. We'd like to leave it that way. There's woods on both sides.
Is that your primary reason for the, the reduction in the width?
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't, you have, you have two lovely houses there, nice neighbors, and, you know, there's no reason necessarily just for three houses to build a, a, you know, a whole market, in fact, a large road between, that would be, I think that would be an excellent assumption.
Have conversations been held with the neighbors?
Actually, can I, can I answer that, which is, at this preliminary, some of the neighbors we have. But, but until we, you know, began to coalesce this idea a little bit, it made more sense to, to get this a little firmer, and then absolutely we'll be talking with, with all of these neighbors. Several of them are aware of it, and some of them quite, are, know quite a lot about it. But until we begin to get reactions from you on an informal basis and all that, and we firm it up, then, then we can be more specific when we talk to our neighbors.
I think development was proposed because sufficient funds weren't available to purchase the whole piece of property, so this is the supplement to that lack of funds?
Because the property's a significant holding of the Ellsworths' estate, and they have a certain, need and certain taxes to pay and certain other events, and this was the solution.
Mm-hmm.
The, the.
Federal Park Service. Who was it?
It was, the National Park Service was the, the federal funding source. And, and that, despite, you know, a great deal of excitement and encouragement by the National Park Service, in the last budget thing that our friends in Washington did, all of the acquisition funding for the National Park Service was cut. And this was, this was their number-two project in the United States in this country.
Well, it's just important for us to understand it all because, you know, our initial approval of the first subdivision of the property was predicated on the fact that this was going to be a bulk transfer of land to the land trust, that one was shaper than another.
Our covenant on that was that at least forty-five acres would go to the land trust, so we're still well in order to, to perform that subdivision. That subdivision was not of this property, it was of the Ellsworth property adjacent to it.
Agreed, but it was still within the framework of us discussing approval or not, including the open space requirements.
Right, right. And for us, this is not, this is not the, this is not our, where we want it to be. We didn't necessarily want to have to come and make this application. This is sort of a backup.
A backup plan.
Has to be. And if the, in, in long run, if the, if the land trust, over time, can, can develop additional funding, then in theory, this could also go to the land trust, but we've got to have a backup position. The, but our understanding is that the first phase of this, the seventy-five acres, that would like to be culminated by the end of the year. And if that's going to be handled by the end of the year, we need it, and if, and if they can't acquire the entire piece, we have to have a way to leave the last piece, this, this piece that hasn't been acquired, it has to, we have to leave it as, in some developable fashion. And so that's really why we're here. It's not necessarily our first choice, but, but we need to go through this, this, these motions.
This isn't a public, anyone on the public, Mr. Say anything? Any comments? Mr. Davis or anyone else?
Am well, I live on Heather Lane, which is across the street. It's a three-lot subdivision with the boulevard. But my question is, do the subdivision regulations, do they allow two-hundred feet on a private road, not a public road?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not in violation of any subdivision code, subdivision street standard, we meet all of them.
Except for asking for the waiver to come down.
Right.
The, since this isn't a formal proposal, is there, does the commission want to do a site walk, or is that something we should wait and have? What's your advice there to wait?
My suggestion would be to wait, a couple of reasons. One is the weather needs to turn around a little bit, but until you decide you actually want to make this application, I would, I would wait at least until your next meeting to decide. In the meantime, maybe you can let us know if this is, if you're going to go forward with this or not, if it's based upon what the discussion will be seeing, would be my suggestion, rather than wait. Now, it might be premature.
They haven't had any Farmington Valley Health, formal notifications as of yet.
We haven't done.
We've done several tests, right.
We haven't, it's, it's winter time, so we, we wouldn't track those guys out. Our, our next steps would be doing final TOPO, weapon identification in the immediate area to make sure that we, we don't run foul of, of any available road, and getting Farmington Valley Health District out there, so that would happen in March, March April, and really And really, tonight, what we're hoping to have this discussion with you is to make sure that nobody was having a heart attack about this, you know, that understood where we were coming from, and if you had any suggestions, if you wanted something changed in a big way, you know, if it's something that we were doing wrong, that we could get some feedback so that we, you know, we knew we were going in the right direction, that we really want to position this thing correctly. And we're looking for some feedback. We fully understand it's an informal matter, and we appreciate the spirit of the informal matter, but we would be very interested if people had significant or serious concerns with this. It's unusual to be here, we certainly know that nothing would be binding without the full process and full public procedure. But the Ellsworths have signed the amendment to the contract, and they are legally bound to sell the seventy-five acres that's shown here under that contract to the land trust in calendar year 2014. This is a little bit of an unusual path, and it's a very unusual circumstance, but they have that legal responsibility. And the Ellsworths are content to keep the remnants of the sixteen-acre parcel, but if this board felt that that was unsubdividable, or it was something that would be contentious or of significant problems, the sooner we could identify that or hear that from you, the better it would be for us to try to figure out.
One question. If the land trust can't come up with the funds to close the deal by the end of the year, what happens to the seventy-five acres? Does it go right back to the Ellsworth estate?
It's only under contract, Mr. Drake, we have a firm contract amendment to sell it, they have a firm right to buy it.
But they have to purchase it by a certain date?
Yes, but not, but not only driving is their desire to purchase this day, but they have certain funding, which is in place for 2014. And if Dick Davis wanted to, I would just have him comment briefly on as to how the land trust uses it.
He doesn't seem real willing. No, I just don't want to. Can you come up with some of those are a little hard hearing, or at least one of us is.
Yeah, I didn't plan to say anything unless I was here for informational purposes, but, you know, obviously, we're very disappointed that we were not able to get, what was it? This was a major grant opportunity that we had, and I, without it, we don't feel that we, we think it's unrealistic for us to raise that kind of money from other sources at this stage. So, within that context, I think Jensen, TJ, Phil have done a great job, and I've gone over this several times, so then, from my standpoint, the land trust standpoint, and I can't think of, again, within the context of a better, better way to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
Would this subdivision be aiding you in the purchase of this property? Is that part of the equation here?
Yes.
So, in other words, if this thing is approved, it would allow you to receive the funds that you need to supplement the funds that they need?
You got to.
To actually get the property purchased for the land trust.
Close the door.
Okay. So, they're all connected?
They are.
I see.
Comments, questions? So, what is the timeline? Where?
I would like to have this, if we can do our part, survey, all the testing, filing on time, I would like to be through with the process sometime in October, so that there is time to get everything filed on the land records, and there's sufficient time for closing with the land trust, because that has to happen by the end of the year. Enclosures always take more time than you think, so I'd like to leave a couple of months for that. So, our goal is to, is to be done sometime in October, which would mean, you know, public hearings in September or August, and we have to get everything done before that, whether it's the whole sidewalks, disability things, all of that has to be done in the next six or so months.
I'm sensing no objection or agreement right now, unless Hiron has another suggestion.
No, I'd say, as an informal process, each side, you know, may or may not make adjustments to the plan, and may come to with this, with an application that may be slightly different than this. So, that's one of the benefits of the informal process. So, I think that what you're hearing so far is that the commission thinks that if this allows the eventual transfer of the open space configuration that's shown there, that's a good thing.
Is there a, is there a Plan B if, for instance?
Plan C.
This is Plan C.
Plan C, if, for instance, that doesn't get approved, then the land trust isn't able to purchase the property or obtain the property, and it's all back in your control, where you can then develop the property, if you so choose, to try to develop the property, correct? In other words, it's not going to the land trust, even though that's your preferred option.
This plan works.
I understand it does.
And if this plan doesn't work?
For some reason.
For some reason, or the land trust.
Isn't able to.
Isn't able to.
Come up with funds.
Will keep working on it.
But the goal is.
But this plan works, and this plan works for 2014.
I see. And the goal is, is to get this land transfer to the land trust?
Our goal is to try and maximize the open space preservation here. And, you know, we've had to drop back a little bit.
Right. But to be fairly compensated for your, your bequeathing of property to, you know, the public good.
And we do, we are excited about you walking the property, once we get a formal application from you, I think that it's a compelling piece of property.
Would that be coming in the next couple of months?
Oh, yes, it has to.
Okay.
It has to, because we're held up, we're all held up by the snow.
Yeah, by the way.
Yeah, it'd just be more meaningful with stakes and subject and a lot of that stuff.
Is there a reason that there is that little strip of land to the northwest? In the middle property block, right there, this little strip?
Yeah, actually, there is a reason. The people, the family, the McCormicks, who purchased that house, that was the home that.
Tim's Michael.
Built. And they've been very supportive of the land trust acquisition. And we've discussed this in detail with them. And if this were to go, were to go ahead, they want to make sure that there is an actual connection to their property of land trust land. So, what we would be proposing to do is leave a slice of land, and we haven't decided whether that's forty feet, or twenty feet, or twenty-five feet, or fifty feet, but there'd be a section of land trust property that would run down to that point, so that the McCormicks would be able to go up that back fence that they have, and where the horses are, and then walk onto the, to the land trust property, and not have to walk across anyone else's property to get to the larger land trust there. They've been deeply involved in all of this.
They were, they were under the impression they'd have the land trust property go right up to theirs, right?
Well, yes, and that's been all of our attention, but no. They, again, there's been all kinds of discussions, so we'll have to see how that plays out. One of the things that Hiron mentioned, there may be slight modifications. We've had a desire to have the land trust be able to access for cutting fields, there's a lot of fields in the back, that perhaps being able to take a driveway off the, or have access from this little cul-de-sac that we're creating. But we haven't shown that because we don't want people to think, for example, that it's a public access point and get the wrong impression. Those kind of details, we still have to work out, because we would like to have access for the land trust above as well as below.
So they can just get a tractor and.
So, there are pieces that have to, have to be worked out.
And there's no subdivision wrinkles you can foresee, we can foresee here?
Not at this point, you know, again, I would hesitate to comment finally until we see an application, but it looks to me as though the three issues that TJ outlined with regard to lot configuration, and essentially, the access requirements are complied with compared to this sketch that we're looking at this evening. This is a very interesting piece of property, obviously, as it's been stated, this is, this is kind of the meadow area, there are some other areas of the property which are flat, obviously, they're interrupted by some significant topography as well, so I think we do, and some of you may have already woven on it, but we do get a chance to take off, take a walk up there, I think it's a very interesting piece. But in instant reflection on it, yes, it's a pretty good. There is ultimately, and just so people are not misled, you know, initially, in terms of determining what could ultimately be done with the property in other quote world, there was some speculation as to, you know, what it could look like, who would develop, and that's, that's not a pretty sight, I mean, that's in fact, you know, at Plan D or something, or D minus, I don't know, whatever, but this is sort of far better than.
Yes, and Howard, the staff, Tom said, was it Howard, or Hiron, or myself, we all looked at that, all looked at that together. I came up with a plan, we detailed, actually, that plan was used, it was not any of our preference, it was something we looked at and said, yeah, this is Plan Z, we have to go to it, it was, but it would be doable to break out fifteen or eighteen, eighteen lots. And that was used in part for, because you have to go through a process with the, as you donate land and or sell land, that all that, the public agencies, that was all part of it. We're not interested in going there. This, for us, is a very comfortable fallback without pushing it.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
The hearing from you. Thank you all.
Yes.
House, any questions?
We're in the process of going through the, we'd like to process if they all know, and they have been watching the sessions on TV, and they have nothing else to do, and now there's no basketball being examined. We're not quite done with that yet, I'm hopeful that we're not wanting to do some things to be involved in that topic as we go along.
There's two budget proposals coming forward, Representative.
There, there, there's probably a lot of calls, sort of a realistic one, that is somewhere between one to twenty-eight, nine, or ninety-eight percent, and two point two percent, depending on who contributes to what. And then there are other proposals that the Board of Finance has asked, the Board of Selectmen have heard, and I believe those have to do with one, and using the budget to, I think it was twenty-five, one point something, depending. And I think, my sense is that those are just saying, well, what if you had to do this? There's still, as far as I'm concerned, the budget that's been proposed is extremely responsible. From a staff standpoint, it's very conservative, I'd like to be able to do more, there's always things that we'd really like to do. Some of the money that we have proposed have enrolled into capital projects, so those will maybe get done sometime in the future, but there'll be combinations of things with regards to improvements along Hock Meadow, possibly work at the Forming Arts Center, Fort Nine Trails, there's a variety of things in the capital plan. So, exactly how this can shake up, and I suspect, you know, it's a very responsible budget, my sense is that it'll probably do very well with the public, but nobody ever wants to see the tax bill up, no question. But we continue to need to provide services to people that they're demanding, as far as the public is concerned, we'd like to be able to do a good job. Any questions? I don't know if there's anything going on that you don't, you don't know about, you have questions about, we're actively pursuing a number of different zoning violations, law issues, we're on top of a number of those. Many of you are interested in looking at the code enforcement officer report forward that you as well as part of your packages. The zoning commission gets that each of their meetings, ever since Mike Lind, the code enforcement officer, has been on the case, we've seen a market sort of decrease in illegal signs, working very hard to get signs and things where they're on, hopefully not posted where they should be, so working hard at that. Anything else, please just give us a call, and try to put things, as many things as we can on the website. There's, the Economic Development Commission has stated that they would like to see the website become more user-friendly, and I don't know how you folks feel about that. There's probably a lot of ways that it could be easier to find, there's no question.
It's harder now than it used to be.
There's more stuff, there's more stuff.
It's hard to find your way.
And I think that, and try to sort, simplify some of that stuff to get you to the right section is probably something we're going to work hard for the next few months, so we'll try to do that. And I fully realize, and I can understand, if I were a member of the public and I had no idea how groundwork could be very frustrating, and we'll continue to try to make that better. Kind of coordinate, one of the things that's really important to me, and hopefully will be of big use to the commission, was getting more GIS stuff out there, so people can go click on a lot, see what, you know, what the lot is, the size of it, who owns it, when it was built, someone, but, you know, towns with a lot less resources than we have have pretty decent GIS systems that are built in the Republic, and it's been my opinion for a number of years that there's no excuse why we shouldn't be able to do that.
Except?
Well, no, there's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar capital item, you know, but it's capital, you know, and so when that's going to happen, and who's going to do it, and how it's going to be done, are all questions that I've been asking for a long time. To me, for less than fifty-thousand dollars, we could do that now, now. And I've told a number of folks that, and I think attraction to do it. So, you know, it takes pressure from you folks, if you think something's valuable, let your members of the Board of Selectmen know, Board of Finance know, and something could do it pretty easily.
I think it's more competitive. That and the realization that there's very little Class A office space available in Central, which is probably two hoards of that meeting, that, you know, there's quite a long discussion about that. Hiron pointed that out, made it clear that we need that, so that incidentally thinking we approve is might be a solution to that, to the man, so. Minutes. Mr. Drake. Gentlemen, let's approve or review the minutes for the March eleventh meeting. Any additions, comments on page one? You're going on page two. On one eighty-seven, I believe the applicant did say Sunoco Station, but I think it's a golf station. Is that a Sunoco?
Which one?
On West Street.
Actually, I think it is a golf.
To golf. I think, but I think the applicant did say, so it's a matter of changing what, I think the applicant did say Sunoco, but it is a golf.
It used to be years ago.
So, we could say Sunoco slash golf station. That way we're safe.
Go back a little farther, Billings third.
Anything on page three?
Service station.
Ethanol. Free air station, yeah. Anything on page three? You're going on page four. And on page six. You're going on, motion to approve the minutes. Some move second. Second? Seconded. Discussion. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Minutes passed. Just gets another A for, another star for, for Ritter.
Yep.
Perfect. And, forward, gentlemen, I apologize for being tardy today. I had another meeting which went for forming arts, and I kept trying to get out of there, but since I was running the meeting, I, anyway, next time I'll try and get here an hour ahead of time and make up for it. It's to get here late and leave to be recused, and we need to heat the hall, I still can't move my hands, the hallway is cold, so. Anyway, anyone have a motion? Any more motions?
Maybe a little recap of the Regional Planning Commission meeting that Mark and I attended last week. The attendance, I guess, it's my first, my first meeting, but it was pretty light, I think there were probably five or six towns represented, plus the crowd, regional planning staff. They're looking for any comments to the revision to the regional planning, I guess it's a regional P O C D.
Correct.
They explained it was not a, not an overhaul.
They explained it was not a, not an overhaul, but kind of a polishing up of some of the data. So we didn't have any immediate comments at that point. But because of the lack of comments to date, they've decided to have a special meeting in April, instead of the regularly scheduled meeting, I think, which would have been in May. So Mark and I, I think we've agreed, will attend that one as well. So if anyone has any comments to the regional P O C D, which is on Crowds website, that one's actually kind of easy to find. So maybe there's, maybe, maybe it's a model or something that can be looked at for the town office. I found it pretty easily.
And Bill and I both have hard copies. So if you're interested in reviewing a hard copy, contact us. And feel free to review. And we'll pose some of your questions, or you can submit them, submit them by email.
What's the date for the special meeting?
It is also the third, Thursday in April, which would be somewhere around the 20th. Probably just do it this, the Tuesday, or Thursday after Easter.
One thing I sent out today, I think.
Twenty eighth, twenty fourth.
You may have seen it, is there's a meeting on the 31st of March. It's going to be at the U S C in Hartford, 227 Morris Street, to discuss that thing.
Twenty seventh.
It's, I believe it's at seven o'clock tonight. I did send it around today. And that will be, the staff, I'm sure, will be there to explain various parts of it and talk about it. Number one, it's a good place to have a meeting. Number two, the parking is easy, your tires should be, you know, well protected during the meeting. And, but the staff will be there to explain stuff as well. So, so if it's something you have an interest in and you want to go to that, that's, I've got two other meetings the same night where I go to that myself as well. Thirty first is next Monday.
It's actually going to be the 17th, the Thursday, the 17th, does that mean? It's just before Good Friday, more Easter.
Anything else? Any motions? Motion to adjourn? Second? One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.